We're getting started.
(laughing).
Sorry to interrupt.
We all already started.
They won't give us a gavel. We'll start again. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, May 6th. I am Chair Rick Vass. To my left is Vice Chair and Commissioner Kristi Yocum. To her left, Commissioner Matt Schulthe. To my right is Commissioners Sean Flowerday and Chelsea Johnson. Would you please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please begin the meeting.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Printing options are available upon request. The first item is the minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on April 29th, 2025.
I move approval of the minutes. Second.
Motion and a second to approve any discussion. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulthe?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. The second items are the claims, approval of the claims process through May 2nd, 2025, and I'll note there's an amendment to include the payroll.
I move approval of the minutes, including the payroll disbursements through April 30th, 2025.
Second approval of the claims.
Motion and a second to approve item 2A with amended payroll disbursements. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulthe?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 2B, approval of the claims, including billing for goods and services beyond the 90-day time period provided in Nebraska revised statute 23-135 for Oat Oil and Propane dated May 5th, 2025, for a total of $776.93, and Whitehead Oil Company dated May 5th, 2025, for a total of $3,319.29.
I move approval. Second.
Motion a second to approve item 2B. Please call the roll.
Schulthe?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 3 are the consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there's an exception, these items will be approved as one with a single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are approval of 3A amendments to the following contracts. C-23-0453 with Municipal Energy Emergency Services Incorporated, doing business as MES Mid America, for the annual supply of sheriff uniform, clothing, and accessories. C-22-0912 with Indian Center Incorporated for the provision of structural upgrades to 1100 Military Road Lincoln. A right-of-way contract with Jack and Eleanor Davis, Davy Road and North 141st Street, in the amount of $400. Agreements with the following for speaking services for the 2025 Nebraska Community Aid and Juvenile Justice Conference to Justice System Partners in an amount not to exceed $3,600. Christian Bijou in an amount not to exceed $1,650. Shamika Stewart in an amount not to exceed $2,300. A utility permit 2635 with OPTK Networks for fiber installation. Utility permit 2636 with Charter Spectrum for installation of PDC conduit. Change Order 2 to County Contract C-24-0931 with Lobato Construction LLC to replace County Bridge S-059. A letter of support for ALO Fiber LLC's application for the Nebraska Broadband Energy Access and Deployment Grant Funding Opportunity and received and placed on file the following reports from Clerk of the District Court and from the Assessor Register of Deans.
Move approval of the consent items.
Second.
Motion a second to approve the consent items. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulthe?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is item 4, the public hearings. The first is a request to vacate portions of a public road located near North 141st Street in Lancaster County, Nebraska.
We will now open the public hearing.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please sign in and state your name.
Good morning. John Barry, Lancaster County Engineering. This is a request to vacate a portion of North 141st Street going south from Rock Creek Road. It's really another extension of the one that we brought forward probably about a month ago. I'm very fortunate every day to get to work with Mike Hollie. Mike is a Tech III. He is working on getting his survey license. So when we started this process, Mike came forward and he was very interested in learning this actual process of the vacations and doing the study. So in this particular case, Mike is going to talk about it. He created all the exhibits and he also did the report that you've seen. So I'm going to let Mike take her over.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please sign in and state your name.
Mike Hollie with the Lancaster County Engineers Office. Like John said, this is North 141st Street. The first exhibit I will show, and all of this is in the packet. Okay. So the portion that we are here to discuss is, this line right here is Rock Creek Road. And we are going to the south of here. So it's down the center of the section, so it's a little bit abnormal. This road was petitioned, this road was created by petition in 1882. From this point north is the portion that we have already vacated. So we're here for here, south. Right here, I'll have some photos here in a little bit. There used to be a bridge there. That was, according to our records, that bridge was removed in 1980 and never replaced. This next exhibit showed, in the red is the road right-of-way by petition. The green was additional right-of-way purchased by Lancaster County in 1980. The yellow was in 2005 when we did some bridge work up on Rock Creek Road. So that just gives an overview of what's going on with the right-of-way situation. Some photos of the road as it sits today. This is looking south from Rock Creek Road. It's gated. It's grass and dirt. Really nothing going on there. This exhibit shows some remnants of that bridge that was removed in 1980. Some of the piling is still there, but as you can see, there's no way to cross there. Lastly, this area is 100%. The area that we're proposing to vacate is 100% in the floodplain, as you can see on that map. And also, Salt Creek Tiger Beetle, critical habitat, and Category 1 saline Wetlands are also present. You can see just a portion of it, but it is present in that area. With all that being said, our office has no immediate plans or future plans to do anything in that area and would recommend approval of vacation.
I did receive a phone call from an individual who was concerned about her father having access to his property, and I believe she spoke to someone.
Correct. She spoke to me. Mike, you want to put that one? Yep, that piece. There's a piece of property, we're trying to, actually, the half-mile line is approximately right here. We're trying to also vacate, vacate some of this road going south from where the bridge used to be. That gentleman owns the property there. He has a, he has a small little residence out there. He was very concerned about his driveway, which ends, which comes in from the south. For the, for planning purposes, if something would ever happen to that house, that little piece is not in the floodway, you have to have 550 feet of frontage to ever rebuild, even though it's in the front, even though it's in the floodway. So that is why we're kind of going a little bit short. We're going to his north property line, so that way, if there's ever an issue, he could rebuild. And that was, I talked to his daughter, so that was the gentleman who called.
You evidently did a good job, because when I spoke to her the second time, she was very pleased with the information she got.
Yeah, she had, she wanted a lot of information. Her dad is having some hearing issues, I guess, and I think we took care of all that, all her questions.
Appreciate that, John. Any other questions for John and Mike? Item. Please go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to item 4B, Amendments to the Air Pollution Control Program Regulations.
Yep, the second public hearing is item 4B, amendments to the following, Article 1, Section 6, Article, and Article 2, Sections 1, 5, 7, 8, 15, 17, 18, 22, 28, and 34 of the Lincoln Lancaster County Air Pollution Control Program Regulations and Standards.
Well.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please sign in and state your name.
Gary Bursham with the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department, Air Quality Section. As we talked and discussed last week at the staff meeting, these regulation changes are really intended to ensure that we maintain compliance and consistency with Nebraska Environmental Protection Act, Nebraska Department of Environment and Energies, air quality regulations, and the Clean Air Act. Again, these regulations have been reviewed and approved by the Air Pollution Control Advisory Board, the Board of Health, and then also by Lincoln City Council yesterday afternoon. And so, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on any of these changes.
Yeah, Gary gave us a very thorough briefing last Thursday, and these are very thoughtful and well-intended changes in the regulations that were done with consideration to all the parties that were infected.
Absolutely, yeah. I think when we, when we bring these changes forward, obviously, we want to make sure that they're clear and understandable for the public, for the regulated industry that has to comply with them, and for our own staff to ensure that if we run into problems, that we don't have any questions of interpretation.
Way better if we get that input up front.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that, Gary. Anything else? Thank you for being here.
Welcome.
We'll now close the public hearing. Oh, wait. Did anyone else want to speak on either of these two items of the public hearing before we close it? Seeing none, they must be here for some other reason, I guess. We'll close the public hearing.
Item 5 is the public hearing action item. After a public hearing has been conducted and closed, action on the item that was the subject of the public hearing will be scheduled as a separate public hearing action item. Because the public hearing has been conducted and closed on that item, no further testimony or evidence will be accepted or admitted during the public hearing action item portion of the agenda. Item 5A, resolution in the matter of County Change of Zone 25009, requesting a change of zone from AG Agriculture to AGR Agricultural Residential on property generally located at 6205 West Denton Road in Lancaster County, Nebraska.
I would move approval.
Second.
Just clarifying, this is for the public hearing we had last week. This is not for the public hearing we just had.
Correct. We take a week in between.
Good point, Matt. All right. Any other discussion? Motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulthe?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is new business. Item 6A, resolution in the matter of authorizing the county to apply for assistance under the Convention Center Facility Financing Assistance Act, approving financing for the project, approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of certain documents in connection with the application, making certain findings and determinations with respect to the application and related matters.
Chairman, I do have a question for you real quick.
Absolutely.
We oftentimes have staff comment before we motion and approve something. Are you wanting to have the, have people talk beforehand, or would you rather have a motion on the floor?
Make a motion. Let, yeah, let's do the motion and then we'll take comment.
Okay. We do have a revised resolution here in front of us, and I want to make sure I'm getting the right one connected to the right one.
The, the two revised resolutions are, they emphasize that this is happening as amended by and under the enactment of LV 116, which is the legislation that was already passed and signed this year, and that we will be planning to operate this in accordance with that resolution, or with that legislation, so.
So.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't, I didn't mark which one goes to which.
It looks to me, because it doesn't have a resolution number on it, it looks to me like the first resolution we're going to consider, the one that you have in front of you, has the page 1 of 3 marked at the bottom.
Does that sound right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll move approval of the resolution as amended and sitting before us here today.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution with, at the bottom of it, has page 1 of 3 we can provide to the clerk. And I do know.
They already have it.
They have it.
Yeah.
I know we have some distinguished guests here this morning to talk about this subject, and my understanding, Jason Ball, Senator Bo Star, and Fabio, who I don't know. Whatever order you all'd like to come forward, and you pick, but we welcome your comments here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Jason Ball, President and CEO of the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce, and it is a really exciting day to get to this step. We are thrilled that we're at this moment where we get to take another step forward into, I think, a brighter future for the downtown in Lincoln, growth in the tourism economy in Lancaster County, and just a big step forward for this entire economy. So it's on behalf of our Lincoln Chamber of Commerce, and of course, the Visit Lincoln Division of the Chamber. It's my great pleasure to ask for your vote to apply for the Convention Center Turnback Financing Associated Package for financing as proposed. Look, why now? We answer that question a lot from our constituents and the business community and people that want to understand this project that maybe haven't been living as close to it and getting the briefings that we all have. We've got two feasibility studies that prove that there is a business case, that there's a very defined market, which we are missing out on in Lincoln and Lancaster County right now, but for having a facility that's the right size of box with the right rooms and the right amenities that are associated with it. Because of those feasibility studies, you'll recall, we added that to our strategic plan, and for folks that want to learn more about that, you can find this plan right on our website at LCLC.com, but this is part of the Vitality Lincoln Strategic Plan that we've been enacting for the past two years here. It will spur more downtown investment, more economic growth, more business growth, more private sector-led growth, as catalyst projects like these always do. And so this is also going to be a huge boon to the tourism economy. I am so appreciative of the county's role in leadership in this. I know this is maybe a little bit of a new space for the county to sometimes get into, and because of that, we've had some new questions. And so I appreciate the county's role that you have taken on in, in leading this program, and a continued relationship with the Visit Lincoln Division that you all have invested in so heavily and so consistently for, gosh, more than 20 years now. So thank you for that. I also want to acknowledge and thank all the folks from the Assemble Lincoln Group that you will work with and hear from on this project more. And then, of course, I have to, have to mention Jeff Mall on our team, who does great work for this tourism and visitor industry. He is the passion behind our ability to do this work in the tourism industry here in Lincoln. Be thrilled to answer any questions that you have for me.
Questions? Jason, thank you so much for your ongoing leadership as well. You know, it takes a team to move these projects ahead, and we've seen that. Thank you for all you and your team do for our community.
We're having a great time with it. Thank you.
A great reminder on today being election day.
Please go vote. I voted early, but I kept the sticker.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
So who wants to go next?
Fabio's up next.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Fabio Braz with Legends Project Development. This is my second time speaking to you. Very excited to be here. My involvement started in this process in January of last year with the site selection process. I'm a project development manager for Legends. And the last time I was here, I spoke a little bit about the history of our company, who we are and what we do, but I'll mention it again, just for the folks in the room. Legends is a company that's half-owned by the Yankees and the Cowboys, and we're a worldwide leader in venue development. It's what we do. It's our bread and butter from the early feasibility work that CSL did to verify the economics of this project, to the pre-development work that we're doing today, into construction and operation of facilities. We currently operate 500 facilities across the world. The largest stadiums in the world, largest arenas, you name it, were the ones that designed, not designed, but developed, operated, and maintained the facilities. So I'm here today to speak a little bit about the process that we've undergone in the past 18 months, talk about the process, and, yeah, sorry, I'm generally behind the scenes, you guys, writing the reports, but here we are. We started the process with the feasibility study by CSL, and once the economic feasibility was determined, we then were brought in to move the project forward. We issued an RFP for architects and gladly received, like, world-class architects interested in this project. We ultimately selected Populous to be our architect of record, because they have an incredible background in designing these types of facilities. From there, we started our site selection process, which involved 1,500 sites across Lancaster County that were ultimately shortlisted to eight sites, and then finally down to three. The site selection process saw the formation of four subcommittees that were looking at 53 different line items for each one of these three finalist sites. Things like the site fundamentals, the community integration, accessibility and connectivity, and the environmental impact. From there, we, you know, spent many months looking at every single one of these elements, and like I said, 53 different line items were evaluated. And ultimately, we decided selecting the Garfield site, which we think is a fantastic spot. I was staying at the Cornhusker last night. Like, I had perfect view down the, like, I could see the site, I could see the site capital, and it's just, it's going to be kind of a transformation, a really cool project. So really excited to be here today in front of you, and really excited to advance the project forward. With that, any questions or anything that I can help answer ahead of this vote?
Commissioners?
I just want to underline many months when we say that.
Yeah.
Exhaustive and exhausting nature of what we did with this, and sort of the multiple levels of criteria, and the really, really nitty-gritty fine details this, this group got down to.
Yeah, it was very large. We literally looked at all, like, public sites in Lancaster County, looked at all the private sites as well. Like I said, 1,500 sites were evaluated for this. Like, we left no stone unturned, and then once we finally got down to, like, these are the viable sites, we really did, like, an incredible level of diligence because it's such an important project, so.
Not an easy decision. I mean, because there's always pros and cons, gives and takes in a process like that, and you guys had to make a really challenging call on the best available site. So I've heard nothing but good things about you all's involvement in this process. I deeply appreciate your coming together with us to help our community take a major step forward, so. And thank you for taking time to be here.
Yeah, my pleasure. Yeah, it's a really important decision, and there are really great sites, and so we, we had to look at, like, things like parking, accessibility, right? Like, all these, like, really important questions that come up. And ultimately, the, the Garfield site ended up becoming, like, the top choice unequivocally.
That was, that was shared with us by my friend, Commissioner Flowerday. So anyway, thank you so much. Any questions, Commissioners? Thank you, Fabio.
I'm Elliot Bo Star, as I believe all of you know, and I am here to primarily thank you on behalf of the Assemble Lincoln Committee for your partnership in this effort. I know that, well, I've, I've been involved in this effort for now over two years, starting with legislation, and now coming to the point we are today. Many others have been involved in this for far longer. And on several points along the path that we've, we've taken to get here, there have been various critical components that had to be met and accomplished in order to be even considering an application at this point in time. One of those was the, the creation of that partnership between the Assemble Lincoln Group at that time and Lancaster County, which has proved to be a, obviously, a critically important component to this process, but also one that I think has been extremely fruitful and complimentary for our goals. I mean, you have the application in front of you, you obviously have a representative in Commissioner Flowerday on the committee, so I'm, I'm sure that you're up to speed on the benefits of this particular project and what it would mean for our community, both from a cultural and tourist impact, but also an economic impact. And so I won't go into all of those things, but, but really, just from a, from a process point, we wouldn't have gotten to this place without that partnership. a process point, we wouldn't have gotten to this place without that partnership with the county. And so we are, we're extremely excited, on behalf of the Assemble Lincoln Committee, to have come to this place and to have this be the application considered before you. And so we've appreciated that work together so far, and we really look forward to it in the future as we work to put the final steps in place to develop and actually have the opportunity to construct this project that we've been spending so much time now talking about and theorizing and contemplating, where I tell some folks that we're now getting into the kind of, well, the fun part of it. Not that it hasn't been already, but relatively speaking, I think we've got some really good times ahead. So with that, thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I do have one question. I'm not sure if you're the right person to answer this. So this is an application from us to the state, and the state approves it. At what point will the turnback tax start being collected for this? Do you know that? Or because, because that's not part of our application. Do you, I mean...
So we're eligible to receive those turnback dollars through the Convention Center Facility Financing Act when all the conditions have been met, one of which is obviously the approval of that application.
Yeah.
And subsequent resolutions passed by this body. Additionally, since the turnback dollars are, they are a financing mechanism for the repayment of debt through bonds, so there'd be a bond issuance process as well that would start that collection and really mark a level of eligibility for that financing mechanism. But, you know, in short order, it would be possible. But really, it comes down to when all of the, of those financing mechanisms align for the county board and we're really getting into that debt issuance. Okay.
Great. Any other questions? Senator Boestar, this wouldn't have happened without a tremendous amount of dedication and leadership in the legislature. I know it's getting something like this through the legislative process doesn't happen easily or quickly.
It has been a team effort. I've certainly passed legislation related to this project and making it a reality. Senator Ballard has as well. Senator, former Senator Wishart was actually the one who kind of roped me into this, so she was there even before I was on the legislative front. And I'm deeply appreciative for her to ensure that I got the opportunity to spend the last two-plus years working on this, because there was not much else going on. And, but it is a team effort all the way around, and so we're thankful for that.
Well, it's been a subject of discussion since I came on, since we came on the board, and now it's more than a subject of discussion. We're taking steps to make it a reality.
It's exciting.
I also want to thank you, Senator Boestar, Senators Wishart, Bosin, Ballard, all of the members of the Assemble Lincoln Committee, the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce, just for all of your work on this project. I've been super excited ever since LB 116 passed, and I am even more excited to be here for the fun part. So thank you all for your work. Excited for the opportunities that we'll bring to Lincoln and the state of Nebraska.
Kristin?
I wanted to add on to that. Thank you for mentioning everyone there, Commissioner Johnson. But I, it's great to look out here and see this community support and this community coming together around this convention center. But I also want to thank Randy Brez as our citizen, who's been involved and been a cheerleader for this, and really gathered a lot of support throughout the community for a convention center. And I'm just really excited to see what this brings to our community and how it continues to keep our downtown vital in Lincoln.
Yeah, when I, just to sort of piggyback on that, when I said that there were a lot of people that were here before I was on this, Randy is certainly
Right.
one of those individuals who's been a real driving force in highlighting the importance of this project and, and kind of, and putting it front and center to drive that political will to get to this place.
Amen.
Randy Brez and Downtown Rotary were beating on the drum of needing a convention center. Before I ran for county board, they've been at this for a long, long time. We've had a lot of partners in this that I want to give special thanks to. Jeff Mall at Visit Lincoln, Todd Ogden at Downtown Lincoln Association, again, Randy and Downtown Rotary, all of the members of Assemble Lincoln. Senator Boestar right here has done an enormous amount of work on this for years. Senator Bosin, Senator Ballard, former Senator Wishart, Lynn Rex with the League of Municipalities, Rich Harrink, Deb Shore from Congressman Flood's office, and then Eric Gerard, who helped with the original legislation, all the teams at Legends and Populous. It has been a really exhaustive process. And Dave Durbin, who has done yeoman's work on this project, and absolutely wants me to not name him, because he loves it when I put the spotlight on him, but he has done a lot of work in addition to. So I'm just, it has been a long time coming, and I'm really excited to be here. We've had a great team, so.
Just, I, I believe Rich Harrink was mentioned.
Yes.
Good. I just want to make sure we're not leaving anyone out.
I missed you, because...
He's done an incredible job in helping secure the private side funding in partnership with the county to get to this place we are now. Also, just want to mention Clark and Anderson.
Absolutely.
As we talk about our architecture team, it's a partnership between Populous and Clark and Anderson here on, as our, as our sort of in-town local partners on the architectural side have done an incredible job as well.
And actually, I did, I did miss somebody. Director of PRO Kenny Zoller has, as our Vice Chair of Assemble Lincoln, did an enormous amount of work. I was just trying to go off the faces I saw in the room right here. He did an enormous amount of work and really, he led several committees and was a vital part of this. So my thanks to him and the administration.
I do have some comments, but is there, anybody else want to talk first before I do?
I mostly just wanted to go down the list. Thank you.
Yeah. I just want to point out, thank you, Senator Boestar. I just want to point out two things, significant things in our application that I get asked about, and even one that was, I heard on the radio today, as wrong. So I just want to point out to the public, the legislation allows for the turnback tax in a 600-yard circumference of the project, except if it's in the Capitol District.
Correct.
This location being selected is not in the Capitol District, so the turnback tax, or, well, it is in the Capitol District.
Capitol District, so, yeah.
Which then allows us to identify areas of the city for the turnback tax to come from. So I heard on the radio today the talk about the 600-yard circumference, and that actually is not in our application. What's in our application is we've identified four areas where the turnback tax will come from. So I just want to point that out to the public that maybe don't have it in front of you.
I want you all to buckle in and assume that you're going to get to explain this exact thing.
Yeah.
About 10 times over the next couple of years, each individually.
Yeah. So it includes
It comes up.
Yeah. It includes four areas. One that is North 27th Street, which is kind of generally the Menards Walmart area on North 27th Street. In southeast Lincoln, generally the Menards and Walmart area there, where my wife says I spend too much money and time already. The, in the southwest quadrant, it includes the Warhorse area, which is still very much in development, and besides, there's a lot of land to go out there. And then out in northwest Lincoln includes a kind of a, what do you call it, a commercial area?
Yeah, it's, it's sort of the next major retail zone that's to be developed. It's the I-80 West Business Center is the official title of it.
Yeah. So I do just want to make sure that people are clear, and I think you're right. We're going to be asked this a lot.
You will. I guarantee it.
The second thing that I've been asked a lot about that I want to point out is in this application is a timeline. A lot of times, people want to know, hey, we approved this. Well, construction starts tomorrow, right? Turns out, it doesn't. It takes a while to go through the design process, through the demolition process and construction process. So on page 20 of the attached documentation has that timeline for people to see. We are applying today in quarter, well, right before quarter three of 2025, and according to this, construction would not be complete for another three years, which is quarter three of 2028, which sounds a long way away. But in the construction of a large project like this, it will go pretty quick. So those are two things I just wanted to point out in the application for the public, for people listening in. Clarification on where the turnback tax comes from. Also, maybe add to that, just remind you, this is not a new tax. This is just reallocating where those dollars are going for, and then the timeline of this.
Correct.
I personally am really looking forward to the impact that this, that this convention center will have on our local economy. This is a long-awaited facility that's going to lead to some great local economic growth for Lancaster County, and I look forward to being a part of it.
Very good. Well said. Now you can tell your wife you're building a convention center.
Exactly.
When I bought my flowers there. Kind of a civic duty.
Right.
Everybody get to Menards. Would it be appropriate to express appreciation to the governor's office as well?
Absolutely. The administration, the governor's office, has been enormously helpful in this process.
Without their commitment, again, it's, they played a crucial role in it. Anything else, Commissioners?
I don't have anything.
Well said, everybody. Thank you to those who came forward and spoke. We have a motion and a second to approve item 6A. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
The next item is item 6B, resolution in the matter of approving an application to the state of Nebraska for state assistance for a project pursuant to the Convention Center Facility Financing Assistance Act.
So this one, too, there's a new resolution in front of you.
Yeah.
And so...
Again, that highlights that this is as amended by LB 116 and as such statutes as amended by LB 116.
So I'd move approval of resolution R-250025 as before you today.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
We do. I agree with you.
Sorry.
We're all excited.
He's rebuilding, he's rebuilding in those muscle memories. Go ahead.
Yeah. No, any discussion?
I think there was one person who got left off of the thank yous. Commissioner Flowerday, thank you for your leadership for the county.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And part of this project.
Appreciate it.
Wearing a lot of hats there, my friend. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is item 6C, resolution in the matter of supporting Madonna Rehabilitation Hospital's congressionally-directed spending request.
I would move approval of this. I think we've got some representatives that are going to talk on this briefly.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Burke Harr, B-U-R-K-E-H-A-R-R. Want to thank you guys for considering this resolution to approve this application for a directed spending by Congress. What Senator, what Congress is doing now is asking specifically Senator Fisher to apply through political subdivisions. Obviously, you're a political subdivision. This is to create a VAU unit at Madonna Rehab Hospital here in Lincoln. So want to thank you for your consideration, since we're doing all the thank yous. Thank you, Commissioners, specifically Senator Flowerday and Mr. Durbin with one R. I messed up sending him an email. I had two Rs in there, so I apologize for that confusion that I created. So, and then we also have Nick Brotzl here from Madonna Hospital.
Yeah. Hi, Commissioners. Good morning. Nick Brotzl, as Burke said, Madonna Rehab Hospital. I just want to echo Burke's. Thank you. Thank you especially Commissioner Flowerday again for helping to shepherd this through the process, and Mr. Durbin connecting us with your federal representation and making sure that the earmark mechanics are happening. You know, we absolutely couldn't do this without your support. As you've heard from Burke, our VAU unit is absolutely critical for weaning critically ill, complex folks off ventilators, and it's one of the only places in the state and the country where that happens. As you're aware, so many loved ones go into long-term care, especially if they are on ventilators, and they stay there, you know, until they pass away. At Madonna, we have a really, really great wean rate, where we're actually getting folks off ventilators, back to their families, back into the community. It's a public-private partnership, this renovation of our long-term care facility that was built in 1971. We partnered with the state and with local community foundations, and now we're really pleased to partner with you all. We couldn't do it without you. So I just want to say thanks.
Having worked at Madonna for many, many years, but not in that specific area, but I've seen this grow as to really be a specialty of Madonna and very much needed in the region, and so definitely supportive of that and welcome. It's, I don't think we've ever had so many sitting and former senators in these chambers as today.
Thank you. Very good. Any other questions for, thank you, gentlemen, for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
We do have a motion and a second. Is that correct? Yeah. We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
I'm voting yes. And one thing that's said, this is somewhat unusual for us, but we do value the relationship with Madonna a great deal. So I'm voting yes.
Motion carries. The next item is item 6D, resolution in the matter of amending the Lancaster County Purchasing Manual according to County Resolution R-25-0029. I move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 6E, resolution in the matter of authorizing the county board chair to sign the Preliminary Engineering Services Agreement Supplement 2, which amends County Contract C-23-0981 related to a federal aid project on South 68th Street Hickman to Roca Road.
Morning. Larry Legg with Lancaster County Engineering. This is a supplement to our design contract for 68th Street from Hickman to Roca Road. That's another project that's funded partly with safety funds. The reason for the supplement is we share a workspace for our CAD, a computer aided design and drafting software with the City of Lincoln, and they updated that workspace. And when they update the workspace, that caused a little bit of extra work for the consultant that's doing the design. So this resolution is to sign the subsequent agreement supplement to get that money to them so they can continue with the design of the project.
I move approval of this resolution.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 6F, Preliminary Engineering Services Agreement Supplement 2, which amends County Contract C-23-0981 with Alfred Benish &amp; Company for additional preliminary engineering services as outlined in Exhibit C for a federal aid project on South 68th Street Hickman to Roca Road. The cost is not to exceed $11,615.85.
And as I said, this is the agreement. Now that $11,000, only 20% is going to be our share. 80% is paid for with federal funds. So that's all I have to say about that. Any questions?
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 6G, contract with Rose Equipment for the annual supply of asphalt crack repair sealants. The cost is not to exceed $100,200.
I believe last week you actually saw the contractor agreement, contract, or award to do the crack sealing with contractor. This is to allow our forces to do also crack sealing on the roads to perform the maintenance, keep the water out of the roads, and keep them from forming potholes if at all possible.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 6H, recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county engineer to award a contract to Pro Seal Incorporated for pavement rejuvenation in the amount of $294,967.74.
Okay, now, this is another, I guess, tool in our toolbox for pavement preservation. We routinely do a, it's a fog seal or rejuvenation sealing for our pavements, what it pavements. What it does, it keeps the top of the pavement a little bit more pliable, a little bit more waterproof, and reduces the amount of, uh, um, I'm gonna say UV damage that happens. So it keeps the top smooth, keeps it a little bit more waterproof, and then it also, um, keeps it from ravelling so you don't get that rough surface. It, uh, we regularly do a preservation as long as the, the pavement is, is suitable. We do it right after we, uh, uh, within a year after we lay new pavements down. Uh, this is for asphalt specifically, and then we do it again in about five years. And then we do it about on a five-year, um, I guess rotating basis. It's a lot cheaper than replacing the pavement. So if we maintain it, and we're, we have an active maintenance program, uh, for our asphalt pavements here in Lancaster County now.
It's better to maintain than to rebuild or replace. I'll make approval.
Most definitely.
Or motion approved.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six I, setting the annual salary for Brian Jackson, Chief Deputy Clerk of the District Court in the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-six cents.
Morning, commissioners. Simon Rezak, Clerk District Court. I'd like to introduce my, uh, new chief deputy, uh, Brian Jackson.
Good morning. I've, I've met and worked with many of you in, in, in the past. Uh, just finished a thirty-seven year career with the city and now looking forward with working in the county and, um, more than willing to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Well, welcome, Brian. We appreciate you coming over to the, the good side now after a bad joke. Sorry. Um, yeah, Simon, this is a big step for you, you know, having the right deputies, a key component to having a successful operation. Very good. Thank you both. I would entertain a motion.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Look, we're, look forward to working with you.
Item six J, reappointments to the Lancaster County Indigent Defense Advisory Committee for the term of May first, twenty twenty-five through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight for Christopher Spike Eickel, Ryan Swaroff, and Andrew Weeks.
I move approval of these reappointments.
Motion second to approve the reappointments. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is item six K, authorization of the payment of twenty-four thousand dollars from the inmate benefit fund to Good News Jail and Prison Ministries of Fairfax, Virginia for providing chaplaincy services for county corrections inmates.
Good morning. Brad Johnson, Director of Lancaster County Department of Corrections. Uh, we're here asking for a disbursement of twenty-four thousand dollars out of our inmate benefit fund to help support Sheldon and the Good News, uh, mission that they perform within our facility, providing religious ser- services and faith-based, uh, activities for those who are placed into our custody. Uh, we have partnered with this group as far back as I can remember, to be honest, and, uh, I, I think, uh, it's a great part partnership and it, it provides a service that, uh, I think, you know, uh, pays dividends for us and the folks there within our facility. So, I don't know if Sheldon has anything he wants to add or...
Uh, there are many facets to the task of, uh, dealing with crime, uh, not the least of which is spiritual. And, uh, the placement of, uh, Good News Global Chaplain in Lancaster County Corrections is, uh, the, the way that, uh, the jail has chosen, uh, to facilitate that aspect of, uh, dealing with the task. So, uh, our presence here is dependent on community support, uh, not the least of which comes, um, through this avenue. So we appreciate your consideration and your support in this matter.
I'd move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve. It, it's good to have you here again, and thank you for your ongoing work.
You're welcome.
I just wanna thank you for doing this. It's really important.
Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Item six L, a recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of Lancaster County to award a bid to Allen Gibbs and Hewlett L.C. for audit services. The cost over three years is three hundred ninety-three thousand seven hundred dollars.
All right. Good morning. Dennis Meyer, County Budget and Fiscal Director. This, this bid and award is going to AGH for Audit Services. Those audits include Lancaster County, Public Building Commission, as well as the Correctional Facility Joint Public Agency. So, we had used our previous firm for about six years, so it was time to go out for RFP through this process. Uh, AGH kind of floated to the top, and, um, when we think about AGH, AGH actually did our audit six years ago. So, um, they're just kind of coming back in. So, um, this will just kinda get us set up for fiscal year twenty-five, uh, through three years from there.
You said they floated to the top. Are you talking based on qualification, based on price, like what were your standards?
It's, it's based on everything that an RFP, um, looks at.
Were they the low bid?
No.
Okay. But we think that they would be better than that who offered the low bid?
They came to the top through the RFP process.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six M, recommendations from the Personnel Policy Board to revise the classification of cleaning supervisor, revise county rule fifteen, fifteen point three timekeeping requirement for non-exempt employees, fifteen point four official roster, fifteen point five record of the Human Resources Department, revise county rule seventeen point two-six referral bonus program, and create hu- uh, Human Resources Policy Bulletin Background Investigation Reference Check Policy.
Yeah, the classification is just cleanup, just to accurately reflect the duties, um, that, that position is doing. Um, rule fifteen point three, that is the one we talked to you about where it's really, and there's a slight change to this. That's why I wanted to come up and, and visit with you. We re, uh, based on some feedback we got, we rewrote it to make it clear that what we're really doing is making sure that any timekeeping system, um, an agency wants to use is gonna integrate well with Oracle or whatever our payroll and HCM or record is at that time, 'cause over time these systems will change. Um, it wasn't to, um, try to preclude or say to, to get a new timekeeping system, you have to ask us permission. It's really about, does it work well with those systems? So the language here is slightly modified just to reflect that. Um, the next one's just cleanup, change in titles, and then the reference check policy, the background check is to add in reference checks to encourage our agency heads to do them, give them some guidance on the best practice around that and some potential questions. Any other questions?
So I wanna go back to the timekeeping requirement, fifteen point three. Does that affect anything that's currently happening, or this is future casting?
This actually reflects what we do today. So everybody that's non-exempt uses TCP except for two locations that have their own timekeeping systems. Um, and what we wanted to reflect is if those systems ever needed to be changed, we just want ISHR and payroll to weigh in that it's gonna work well. So no, no changes at this time.
Thank you. I move approval of these recommendations.
I have a question. I'll second, but I had a question. Sorry. Um, on the cleaning supervisor reclassification, there's some duties that are crossed out on the job description. Have those just gone to a different position?
Yeah, there's a different position doing those. So we struck them. It's been a while, and I know Karen here, if she wants to speak more to that, we struck them to make this accurate reflection of what this position actually is responsible for, 'cause they are no longer doing that.
Okay.
Good. Thank you, Barb. Any other questions before Barb goes on her way? Looks good. Thank you. Um, motion second. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is item seven, the legislative update.
I don't have anything either, so we will move forward.
The next item is item eight, the executive session.
I move we go into executive session, uh, for a strategy session regarding real estate transaction and to receive legal advice and to protect the public interest at nine fifty-seven AM.
Second.
Motion in a second to go into executive session. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're now in executive session for the-
..............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Okay, I entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
A move to come out of executive session at 10:31 a.m.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is item nine, public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak on items relating to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to one appearance of up to five minutes and that time may not be reserved, transferred, or otherwise assigned to other speakers. These time limits may be extended or reasonably decreased at the discretion of the chair.
Are there any members of the public wishing to make public comment at this time?
Can we just check to see if that gentleman's outside? Can you just look out? I mean, there was a guy here who...
Right.
I don't want him to lose opportunity if he doesn't know.
He left.
Okay, all right.
That's that leaves Margaret. It's a valid question, Sean, because he wasn't part of...
Right.
All right. Very good. Thank you for checking, deputy. Seeing none, we'll move on with the agenda.
Item ten, announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting, including a department budget hearing, on Thursday, May eighth, 2025, at eight thirty a.m. in room one twelve of the county city building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, May thirteenth, 2025, at nine o'clock a.m., and a department budget hearing immediately following in room one twelve of the county city building. County commissioners can be reached at four zero two four four one seven four four seven, or commish@lancaster NE dot G O V. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on L N K T V, which is available on ALO Channel Two and Spectrum Channel thirteen hundred. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. L N K T V apps are also available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Item eleven is adjournment.
Move adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are adjourned. I will now call to order the Lancaster County Board of Equalization for Thursday, May sixth, twenty twenty five.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE dot G O V. Printing options are available upon request. Item one is the minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, April fifteenth, twenty twenty five.
Move approval of minutes?
Second.
Motion is second to approve any discussion. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two, additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Approval of the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three is a public hearing. The following motor vehicle tax exemption applications, American National Red Cross, Family Service Association of Lincoln, Mercy Meals of Lincoln, First Slavic Baptist Church, V S L Lincoln South Lake LLC, Vital Services Incorporated, Saint Michael Catholic Church, Cedars Youth Services, Slavic Christian Church, Redeemer Lutheran Church, Emmanuel Retirement Communities, V S L Lincoln Summer LLC, Saint Teresa Catholic Church of Lincoln, and Cross the Line Church.
We will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
Item four, other public hearing action items. After a public hearing has been conducted and closed, action on the item that was the subject of the public hearing will be scheduled as a separate public hearing action item. Because the public hearing has been conducted and closed on that item, no further testimony or evidence will be accepted or omitted during the public hearing action item portion of the agenda for the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval of the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item five, public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak on items related to county board of equalization business not on the agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to one appearance of up to five minutes and that time may not be reserved, transferred, or otherwise assigned to other speakers. These time limits may be extended or reasonably decreased at the discretion of the chair.
Any members of the public wishing to comment? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Item six is adjournment.
I move adjourn. Second.
Motion is second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are adjourned.